Ms. Hurley.
Okay, next is a presentation of survey results of roadside litter and recycling in Wacomiko County. Unfortunately, Mr. President, the students from Salisbury University that were going to make this presentation had to leave. They requested that we reschedule this presentation for another meeting. So with your permission, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is the submission of the fiscal year 26 operating and capital budget.
If that's been their request, okay, all right. Okay, thank you all very much. We're sorry to hold you up, but we appreciate it.
All right. Do we get a motion or anything?
I do have the binders for the budget. I can go get those and pass those out real quick.
Well, is, yeah, okay, here's, here's, there we go. Yes, you're good. Yes.
I left a pile of books, four.
Yeah, Laura's getting them.
Okay.
Oh, sorry about that, Bob.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank you, buddy.
Next time we have is a presentation of the survey, oh, excuse me, that was, sorry. The submission of the fiscal year 26 operating and capital budget.
All right, yeah. Thank you all. So we hereby submit to the county council the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026, commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. We obviously want to thank you and thank all the citizens for their feedback as we have been constructing this budget. It was definitely, well, you just heard from the delegation, it was definitely tricky and difficult. Pam's going to go over some highlights with you. I know typically we just hand it off, but we think it's important to point out some very specific things in the budget. And I'll let you, go ahead.
Pam Holan, Finance Director. So this is a balanced budget as required by the charter. The tax rate is at the revenue cap number of .8099, which is a decrease of over three cents from last year. That does require us to decrease our personal property tax rate as well because state law only allows you to do two and a half times real property. And thus, because we are decreasing our personal, our real property, we're decreasing our personal property. Personal property does not grow as fast as real property, so those revenue numbers we did have to bring down. Our assessable base grew by over 9%. So the revenue cap kept it such that there's only a 2% increase in the real property tax rate. We did increase income tax. This is a volatile, volatile number, but we do receive this 18 months in arrears from the state. So we believe the estimate that we have in here is appropriate. Obviously, it's something we will have to continue to monitor as we move forward. But basically, the state has pretty much collected everything, or will have collected everything by June 30th, that we will get next year. We don't get any indications from them ahead of time. We have to make our estimates based on what the economy did 12 months or 18 months in arrears. The state did give us a one-time bump in our disparity grant by $2.7 million. And, but to offset that, they decreased our revenue grant for teachers' pension, and they passed along $1.7 million of pension costs for the teachers. So that bump basically offset those two costs that we, in, in our budget.
Assessment taxation too?
Pardon me?
And assessment taxation too?
Yes. Well, it doesn't quite cover everything. The $2.7 million, so between the reduction in revenue and the $1.7 million of pension cost, that's 2.4. Assessments was about a $700,000 increase. So it's close to covering everything that we had to go up, but not everything. We did, in this budget, give the Board of Education both MOE and their request for an investment in, so the number that they requested and is in their proposed budget is in this budget as well.
Is there a statement as to why? The basic reasons as to full funding?
It's why we did it. Because as the executive, I feel it's important to invest in education. I think that their ask was reasonable. The MOE last year was at 51 million. It goes up to 53 automatically with enrollment. And their ask was for the additional 2%. And as Pam said, I kind of looked at it a different way where we understood that, you know, getting this one-time funding, we were able to, to be able to fund this. So for right now, I feel comfortable in this year doing that. I don't know if it will be sustainable in the way that we're going, but for this year, we were definitely able to do that. And she's actually going to explain some additional parts.
It does become a recurring expense.
It does. It does.
So if it doesn't become a sustain, if it's not sustainable when it's reoccurring, how do we take care of it?
Well, what she said, I believe what she is saying is, is that the 2%, adding 2% every year may not be sustainable. We believe that the number that this will set the base at for MOE is sustainable.
In our economic, I don't, I don't think we need to get into a big debate right now, but I will put this in, put this in your ear.
Yeah.
In our economic times, the way they are, I understand that we've got a nice balance. Would it be better to do this bump as a one-time funding?
So I, I think we debate those during budget hearings. At this moment, I would like to finish my presentation.
That's fine. I just wanted to mention it.
Yep. So I, I'm asking, let me finish, and let me get to the end. We've also put in increases for the City of Salisbury Fire, as well as the Volunteer Fire and EMS, Warwick Funding, Increase to SWEAT, Increase to PAC-14, Increase to Humane Society, and some other ancillary small increases. As I stated in a previous statement, we have capital pay-go with 28 projects being funded. So there is significant number of small to medium projects in that 28 to cover the $16 million of capital pay-go that is in this budget. We are planning to issue debt this year for certain projects. That's on the capital budget tab. You will note that there are things highlighted on the capital budget tab in yellow. Those things are different than what was presented in the CIP, in the fact that there was no adopted CIP. We took additional information that we had, and that's what we typically do anyways with the capital budget. But since there's no adopted CIP, we made, made the best estimates based on current projects and where the funding should go at this moment. There was discussion at the public hearing about Fruitland Primary. So since that period of time, and part of the other way this budget was able to be balanced is we had continued discussions with the Board of Education as to the funding requirements to maintain the schedule for Board of Education's building of Fruitland Primary. They got an advantageous number from the IAC for funding. You will see that reflected on the capital budget tab. And as such, for them to continue the project forward, they actually did not need any bond funding and/or forward funding in 2026. But the number, the original number that we had was $5 million, and I believe the new number is 12, from the state. Yes. Original number from the state was that they were going to get $5 million. They're now getting $12 million in fiscal '26. So that $7 million swing significantly impacted their cash flow ability, and thus, they are able to move forward without any funding from us in '26. That does not mean that forward funding is off the table. It is off the table for '26. It is a '27 issue at this moment. So that is the other way we closed the, without, that's the other way that this budget was able to be balanced, because we did not have to put any interest payments in here for that debt service. The budget includes the second year of the FOP contract. It is a two-year contract, so that will be up for renegotiation in, during this fiscal year for the start of fiscal '27. Most departments are receiving a 3% COLA and a 2% STEP. But it is being split over the year. The 3% COLA would take place first full pay period in July. The 2% STEP would take place first full pay period in January. The-
We base that off of inflation, so inflation right now is at 2.8. So we wanted to make sure to at least cover those costs, maybe a little bit more, and then hit the step in January.
And again, as I have stated previously in previous meetings, we do first full pay period because our system mean, does not allow us to change a pay rate in the middle of a pay period without individually calculating per day, per employee, how much that pay rate is. Like, so, like the federal government, they do a pay raise, the first pay period, full pay period in January typically. We do the same thing. It is for, and the other portion is, is I can't backdate a pay raise into this fiscal year. So pay raises take place first full pay period of a fiscal year or first full pay period of January to be able to make it feasible that these things happen in a timely manner. Because if we literally had to touch every employee, we would not be able to accomplish it in one pay period. Because you would have to manually calculate by person, by day, how much their pay is changing. And then for other funds, there are rate increases being proposed for Wreckin' Parks, Civic Center, in certain areas in Wreckin' Parks, because there are new events, new sports, new things, and others, just because of the rising cost to have staff and rent facilities and that kind of stuff. So at Civic Center, we haven't raised those rates in a couple of years, so we are requesting a rate increase for renting that facility to help maintain it. And then, as been, as been discussed this spring, I believe Public Works Solid Waste Division had a public hearing on it. This budget does include rate increases for solid waste, because it is an enterprise fund, and we should be funding these amounts and putting money away so that we have the ability to continue to build cells and not do it via borrowing. So that is my presentation. I'm requesting that you guys set your council dates. I will gladly come back with any department heads, answer any questions. It would, if you have a question that might require me to give you some analysis, it would be helpful to me if you provided it to me ahead of time. Otherwise, I will say, sit here if I can't answer it at that moment. I will sit here, I will get back to you. But if I can have it ahead of time, I will try to answer your questions that day when we come in for public, for the different work sessions. So, thank you very much for letting us present this, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 46-2025. This is approving a permanent easement agreement and temporary workspace agreement between Wacomiko County, Maryland, and East Shore Natural Gas Company on property located on the west side of Wacomiko County Detention Center. We have Mr. Paul Wilber here and Mr. Bunky Lufman, if you have any questions.
And a motion from council to approve Resolution 46-2025. Second? Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor of Resolution 46-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry, resolution passes unanimously.
And the next item for business is Resolution Number 47-2025. This is approving a right-of-entry agreement with the State of Maryland Department of Transportation on county-owned property located on the northerly side of Owens Branch Road for the purpose of grade-all training. And we have Mr. Mustafa Kilcarson here, Director of Public Works.
And a motion from council to approve Resolution 47-2025. Second? Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 47-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry, resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the submission of an appointment to the local management board by Mr. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Good afternoon, Council President.
Good to see you.
Hopefully, this is not a controversial pick, because we seem to be in a good flow here. So I'm here to formally submit the council president as a member of the local management board. And of course, they're here to promote safe, healthy, and stable environments for all county children and families, and do a really good job at it.
Everyone's been paid off accordingly.
I got the phone call yesterday.
Before you, it's Resolution Number 48-2025. This is confirming the appointment of John T. Cannon as a member of the Wacomiko County Local Management Board, also known as the Wacomiko Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 48-2025.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry, Resolution 48-2025 passes unanimously.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 26-2025. This is approving the natural gas distribution services to install mains, conduits, conductors, pipes, and other facilities in through along or under county right-of-ways and other real property in order to provide natural gas services to residents and business owners throughout the county's boundaries.
And a motion to approve Resolution 26-2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion to carry, Resolution 26-2025 passes by a vote of six to one. Opposed was, yes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, good afternoon.
We're here for, to introduce Legislative Bill 2025-05. It's an act to amend Chapter 117 of the Wacomiko County Code titled Building Construction to reflect the current additions of the International Residential Code, International Building Code, and International Energy Conservation Code, and to amend the process of promulgation of future additions. The county has adopted in the past the International Residential Code, International Building Code, International Energy Conservation Code. They are periodically updated, and under the currents, when they get updated, the council approves the updated version. And that's what this is for. Mr. Illuminati is here. The county attorney's office prepared the bill. If you have any questions, the county attorney's here to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill Number 2025-05. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I got some. In this bill, if there's things in here that there's, any councilman or builders would see as a major drawback, or could it be changed? Could we, could we amend any of it?
Absolutely.
And stay within the law?
The county already does that. So for example, I know times of the essence, I'll give an example I prepared. A GF CI outlet is standard in kitchens and in bathrooms. It prevents water from getting in and somebody getting electrocuted. If the IRC in the future said, best practice is a GF CI in every outlet, in every room of the house, the chief building inspector could make that recommendation to modify that part of the code to only keep it in bathrooms and kitchens. So there are parts of the code in the IRC and the IBC that the county already has modifications for. Because remember, this, the International Code Council, the model code, is used by jurisdictions throughout the United States. We're in a more rural water area than the middle of the country that is nothing but farm. And so you're going to have different variations and adjustments. So we already have modifications. There can be modifications that if a builder in the future makes a recommendation to say, that's too cost prohibitive, or that's not best for this area, the chief building inspector can make that recommendation, council can make that recommendation.
So, but unless it's something that, like, say, the sprinkler system, we can't modify that, correct?
That's state law.
That's state law.
Correct.
So if it's something that falls under state law.
Correct. This is more about the process of what's the code for the county, what's the code process as well.
In, in drafting this, did you consult with any builders or anybody, send this out to any builders to see if they seen any issues with it that they would like to see changed?
So, no, because at this point, we're just bringing it up to speed. So that's what has to be done. But the 2021 version should be, is getting done now, is current. The 24 version is around the corner, because it's every three years. So that's going to be the big one that needs significant modifications. I believe there are some concerns about some modifications in the current code versus the county code versus the model code, that after this is done, those modifications will be coming forward in the future. But at this time, this is just to get on board with the state requirement that our code be up to date. It's two versions old, it's a decade old, the state wants to see it brought up, and then it's a question of how to do this in the future. Do a legislative bill every three years, or naturally adopt it and go through the second process?
Have the opportunity in the future to-
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? We'll do it by roll call vote. All those in favor of Legislative Bill 2025-05 will say aye. Starting with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Hastings?
Aye.
Wim?
Aye.
Shields?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2025-05 passes unanimously.
This is just being introduced today.
Correct.
So this is just to introduce it. It'll come back next month, in May.
Okay, I didn't have-
For a public hearing, right?
Yes, yes. We can have the public hearing on May 6.
So all you're doing today is adopting it on first reading.
I understand. All right, then, as the record states, and that was for the introduction of Legislative Bill 2025-05. Thank you. Chatel? Good evening, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President. Good afternoon, County Council. My name is Angelique Chatel. I'm the internal auditor, and I would like to present Resolution 51-2025, adopting the amended annual audit plan for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
That'd be the purchase card audit report?
The gift card review. And then also to remove things that I won't be able to get done to this year.
Resolution 50-2025 is the purchase card audit report.
50-2025, yeah, we're not doing that today?
No, we're not doing 50.
Yeah, we're just doing 51-25.
Yeah, yeah. 51.
Thanks. So it's 51-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 51-2025. Second?
I'd like to make a couple amendments whenever it's proper.
All right. If you'll give us an overview, thank you.
This plan has five audits, one review, and zero consultations. There's one addition, it's a gift card review. The risk-based reason for adding was, one, a member requested the review, and secondly, during the gift card purchase, during the P-card audit, I noticed some gift card purchases. And so this'll dive deeper into that. And then there was also some, Councilman Holloway showed me a report from another entity, Wacomiko County Public Schools, about how there were some recommendations in the past about gift cards. So looking at how we're doing things based on that a little bit, or for you to make those decisions later on review.
Thank you. Councilman Holloway?
Well, I'd like to make two amendments. I guess you'd call it the second paragraph period to review five to 10 years, depending on the availability to support documents. Change that to four years. I'd like to make that amendment. Motion to amend this to four years.
Motion is second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, the second amendment, okay. Second amendment, it's the second page, who the gift cards were given to, that's, that's been added. Make that motion to amend to who received, who the gift cards were given to. That's how she's got it stated.
Seconded. It's the second. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry, amendment passes.
Oh, one of the, I just wanted to note that I'm removing projects that I haven't started yet this year, so that the, hopefully the plan will be completed by the end of the year.
I have a question.
James?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry about the voice, but I, I think the amendment's fine. I think, like, employees, like, if it's, you know, like, depending on how that situation goes, I don't, I don't know how it's going to look if we, and I think we should do the audit. I just think when we present it, I think we need to be mindful of who the employees are, that we're not like, you know, unless it's necessary. I think we should just be mindful of when we get the information of, because they are employees that work for us, and if, if a lot of, you know, I don't know what we're going to find, but I'm just saying, let's, we'll be mindful with the employees.
And even people that are not commercial entities, there might be that concern, even if they're not employees, just regular citizens that having their name. However-
Yeah, I'm just concerned about just the employees of the county.
What we could do is have a portion of it being redacted, or so the, the full audit report would have the names of-
I'm not interested in redacting anything. This is taxpayers' dollars we're talking about, okay?
Okay. I can talk to the county attorney about what legally has to be redacted.
That's what I mean, is what's appropriate, but, you know, let's get the information.
And just one note, it's, it's not technically an audit, like, I'm not going to come up with a finding. It'll be to present the information for council to then decide if they want to create rules around gift cards.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand, Joe. So what, what you want is John Doe giving a gift card for $50?
To who?
That's what I say, John Doe.
John Doe giving a gift card, card to John Smith. Now, John Doe giving a gift card to John Smith for $50.
Okay.
There should be the giver and the receiver, and the amount, and wherever it's bought from.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. I don't know that you'll, I don't know that you'll get it, but I agree.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry, amendment passes.
Note on the, yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
Amendments, questions, amendments, changes? Anything else? All those in favor of Resolution 51-2025 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry, Resolution 51-2025 as amended, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come in the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns.
Hi, my name's Joe White, Wacomiko County. I know you just did receive the buzzard presentation today. I do want to remind you that you did receive your financial audit of 2024, almost four months late by state law. I have a direct question that I would like to see answered. I'll be here at the budget meetings, at the budget hearings. We've spent the last five months talking, and I say we, not me, but some of our elected officials about breaking or altering the revenue cap. One of the things that doesn't get mentioned very often about the revenue cap is, is also what it does to real property for, for business owners in this county. You know, yes, real property for your home, yes, it, it's an impact for every citizen. I'm not a business owner in this county. I am very concerned about how our state's spending money as a business owner. But one of the things that would raise a red flag for me in this county would be is if you took the revenue cap off of, of property tax. And, you know, for, for folks out there who may not know, if you own a business and you even lease your, your property, you still have to pay property tax on your tables, chairs, those types of things. A lot of folks don't know that. So if your elected officials remove the revenue cap or alter it, your hamburger's going to cost a little bit more. Businesses do not pay taxes, customers pay taxes 100% of the time. The delegation here brought up a lot of good points, and back to the revenue cap, one of the issues that has come up that has even brought this into forefront seems to be a miscalculation of our income tax- miscalculation of our income tax revenue. I did watch our county executive's hearing that was mostly Board of Education folks there. Director of Finance Pam Olin showed a chart that showed property, property tax revenue going down because of the revenue cap and income tax going up, and it's not stable. I have a chart here that was prepared, goes back six fiscal years, and even shows the budget number that the county executive put in hers for just income tax. So in her, in her presentation, I don't know if it's in your, in your binder, it was listed at 66.5 million. The last time we only received 66.5 million was in fiscal year '22. So that was a year that started in June, or July 1, '21, into June 30 of '22. And Director of Finance Pam Olin just said the state's 18 months behind. Your trend is every year, we have a humongous surplus in income tax. In the state, the delegation was just here saying, hey, now's the good chance to store away some extra acorns. These are our acorns. And for a property, for someone in the community, a citizen paying property tax, we still need the revenue cap. So as you're going through this budget process, I really think you need this information, and I think you need to ask why you have a finance director who is not able to better calculate this. I like being conservative, it's great, but on one hand, you're going to be so conservative, we're going to bust the revenue cap for education? It's absurd.
Is that the grant you got? I'm sorry, is that the grant you got?
No.
Oh.
Jim Atkins, Wacomiko County. Just to follow up on what Mr. White said, over the past six years, there's been a 13% increase in the money collected for property taxes. There's been a 39% increase in income taxes, and over a 200% increase in others. The revenue from '23 to '24 fiscal year was $25 million plus some change, increase. Of that, 18 million of the 25 were from state and federal grants. So if state and federal starts chopping back on the money, the county's not going to look as well as the county looks right now. Following up again on Mr. White, last year, according to the audit we got just a meeting ago, I believe, the county brought in $26.12 million more than they budgeted. 12% in income taxes, $5 million for the American Rescue Plan, and 10 million on investments. At the same time, while they were bringing in $26 million more than they budgeted, they spent 16 million less than they budgeted, which sounds good, except there's a $42 million disparity between what they brought in and what they spent. 42 million is close as we can get to getting an actual budget on what money is coming into county and what money is going out. So just keep an eye on that, please. I know on the last budget, the council did not fund any opened positions that had been open for more than two years. I'm asking that you not fund any open positions in this budget. The executive's office has no problem coming in here and telling you they've hired somebody that need another $50,000, $80,000. So whenever they fill a position, they can come in here and ask you for whatever they need, but stop inflating the budget, okay? The other thing is for the volunteer firefighters in Wacomiko County. Your county executive is taking credit for you not having to pay taxes on your property All of a sudden, she's gotten an answer a year later than when we first started this, when I presented you with the Senate bill and the House bill, and the date it had been passed by the federal government, and they wouldn't accept the letter saying it was there. Now, a year later, all of a sudden, with all the contacts they have with Congressman Harris, they're able to get this approved. It was approved a year ago, don't fall for what you're being told right now.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Ben Linecker, and I'm, I guess unfortunately not here to talk about the budget, which I didn't realize was such a big thing today, so I apologize for that. But I'm a father, a local neighbor, and a concerned citizen. I've got a bachelor's degree in aviation business management. I've flown professionally in corporate cargo, and I've gone all around the world, and currently I'm employed by American Airlines out of Philadelphia. I'm an Airbus captain. When I go to work, I transport around 200 people every flight across this great country, and nothing gives me more joy to get in my car and come back to the shore. What we have here is absolutely amazing regardless of how it's painted, whether you're Republican or Democrat, and I just want to remind everybody of that. So yesterday, I attended the airport council county meeting at the Salisbury Airport with several local-based pilots and mechanics. When we met with the airport management and the airport county council, it was my first time honestly ever doing that, and unfortunately, I was kind of forced into it because of what's going on at the airport. During the meeting, we spoke at length at the concerns that we have recently come to light, namely that the airport is restricting the activities of general aviation mechanics on the airport. Specifically, that mechanics are being actively barred from working on airport property and for us as private pilot owners, and they are physically being removed from the airport to do so, and thus are unable to serve or repair general aviation aircraft based at the airport. One such mechanic, unfortunately, she couldn't be here today because she was working, she is a local mechanic, wants to be an entrepreneur. She's asked several times what she can do to become a local mechanic, and unfortunately, she's not getting the correct answers. She also wants to create a business, employ local people, and get to work, literally. The other one is actually my mechanic, he's like my grandfather. He's a retired veteran. He worked at Wallops Island for NASA, and then he came to work independently at Salisbury Airport, and he was there for over, he's been there for over 40 years. These people aren't unknown. They've been kicked off of the airport property now, and we as owners have no idea what to do, because like your vehicle, our airplanes need service. We are the tenants, and we're concerned that the compromise of safety at the airport management is created as barred aircraft owners from a choice of who maintains the aircraft and which they carry their families. Towards their argument, airport authorities are citing the airport rules that don't say anything or claim anything. The Salisbury Airport T hangar tenants are not asked to provide commercial services to the public out of their leased space. They are simply asked to have a choice in who comes to work for their aircraft when maintenance is required, just as you would.
If I could ask you to wrap up.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I suppose there's. Long story short, we're really concerned about the safety of our community. As a pilot, I only get the choice once to, to fly every flight, and if that plane quits, there's only one direction it's going, and it's not where I want it to go. So I would ask you guys to please, as stewards of our county, pay attention to what's going on at the airport, because it's not good right now at all, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Very much.
Hi, Mikel Darlene, Wacomiko County. I'm prepared with statements today, so I'm speaking off the cuff. You know, we, as our community in Shadow Hills, I am speaking in some level as the HOA president today. We recently obtained the Safari de Cory audit. The management response was deeply troubling to us as a neighborhood. We have held a meeting, we have discussed our concerns with this, we've expressed them to the county executive via certified mail and email. I spent a large portion of my day yesterday on the phone with each one of you members of the council, and I really gratefully appreciate you taking the time to take my calls, to hear me out, to listen to the concerns of our neighborhood. Our response that we received from the county executive was very unsatisfactory to us. We do not want the misleading in what we believe to be slanderous and derogatory statements entered into the public record. We know it's been pulled today, we know it'll be on the next meeting, we will be back then. Once again, I really do appreciate the time that you guys spent to hear us out as a community. I want to pivot a little bit and talk about the fact that I'm seeing a real trend here. None of us thought a year and a half ago, when the Safari de Cory issue first came up, that we'd find ourselves so involved in local politics. I'm not sure that any of us really wanted that. We're really glad for the community bonds that it has brought to us, but what I'm seeing now is so many issues where we're saying we were blindsided, we didn't know. I don't know much about what TIP Quinn or what's going on there at all, but I'm starting to hear word, because people are like, well, you guys are working so much with parks, have you heard about this? I'm going to read you something I saw on Facebook this morning. It said, announcing a state park in our neighborhood without the input from the local community is just plain flat out wrong. They don't care about us and what we want or don't want, it's all political, so they can thump their chests and say, now we have a state park in Wacomiko County, the only county without one. It's ironic, because we would love to have a state park in our backyard, and, you know, we've been working for a year and a half to try to, you know, bring the original vision for Conley Mill that was around, you know, since the donation of the land to life. But I understand that the underlying theme is the same. They didn't know, they were blindsided. This isn't something that they got a chance to have input on. We saw this with a bio refinery, an entire bio refinery was built in the neighborhood's backyard, and nobody knew. This is where we lose so much productivity, when we have to have so many discussions, and it goes on for so long, and nobody knows. So I just wanted to bring that common thread out, and also to say thank you guys for your support as we continue to try to wrap up this really bad experience in our community's history.
Hi, Holly Campbell, Wacomiko County. Not really prepared either today, but I do want to support what Mikel said, the trend that she mentioned, I just, everything she said, I agree with, whether it's us, whether it's different communities. These like pop up, nobody knew, you know, everybody's got to mobilize and fight your government. It's ridiculous. And this county has a problem with the truth, and they have a problem with transparency, and I don't, I hate using that word, because I don't feel like people even uphold what that word means anymore. It's plastered on everything, and it's just words now. It's not behaviors. The behaviors are not there, the transparency is not there, the truth is not there. So at some point, it would really be good to see more people advocate for the truth. You know, listening to this conversation this morning about the dredge soils and the, I'm sorry, the spoils, I guess, that we need, the area that you need for that, I guess what really kind of alarms me is where's the $850,000? Why is there a conversation that we have put aside $350,000 a year for six years, and that's $2.1 million, and, and we just sat there and listened to them and say, no, there's only 1.25? But the conversation on where's the 850? Where is it, and who's going to do something about it? Where did that money go, and why is nobody accountable for it? What's going to happen with that conversation after today? It's stuff like this that drives me as a citizen crazy. We're talking about busting a revenue cap for the schools. They needed $2 million, $2 million, honestly, to meet it, it's not like that much money when we've got 85, you know, and, and then we've got 850 missing. What on earth is going on? And what will happen now? Like, that is just one little thing, and these pop-up topics are over and over and over. I don't really know where else to go. I do look forward to the Safari de Cory audit coming out. I agree with her, and I will stand behind the fact that the name of Shadow Hills has been slandered online. I will tell you, it has been all over Nextdoor. And I'll tell you, as a realtor and as a branch vice president, our company uses Nextdoor, like, our realtors advertise, like, when you want to boost your property and you guys list your homes for sale, one of the places that, that realtors advertise, because it's highly visible and it's used to find out what's going on in neighborhoods, is Nextdoor. I could show you the graphic from my company where our agents pay to advertise, and that's one of the sites that they advertise through. It's one of the best places. And the name of my community is plastered all over there as a horrible place to live, and that has come as a result of this, and it's inexcusable. And I hope that something comes as a result of this. I hope that it's, I hope there's an apology made to the neighborhood of Shadow Hills to state that they did nothing wrong by standing up for what was, you know, rightfully promised to them. This should never have happened. And the people who aren't here today, my neighbors who can't be here because they're working, you know, I think that they would stay, if they could be here, they would say the same thing I did. Thank you.
Make me forget what I was going to say. Good afternoon. I'm glad I got here, I was in meetings in Annapolis, but I was listening on the drive, and I did want to comment, I'm glad you brought that up, about that 850, because I was sitting there going, wait, wait, this is not adding up, and where's the money? It also brought up, oh, I'm sorry, Monica Brooks, hello, Wacomiko County, my bad.
We know.
Good afternoon, Council. And as we're talking about how we're going to allocate funds, as we're talking about where can we find money, we also need to make sure we're not missing money, and where is that money? And where is it being, you know, how's it, how's it being handled? The other piece that I wanted to address was when the people were talking about the dredging and all of that and what was needed, and when President Cannon brought up the 350, 350, 350, 350, it also occurred to me that perhaps there is a missing piece of a check in balance. That was with previous county executive, right? That, when it started, correct, President Cannon? And so as we're putting this money, as we're doing it, where are we checking to see that this money is being utilized for what you approved? So if we had that piece, and I don't know kind of where that falls in line, then there could have been a sooner than later go away, well, hold up, we, now we've already given you 700,000 or whatever, we're now we're at this much, we haven't seen it move, right? And then it also occurred to me that there may be a space, because hearing these, these new people that are working with Public Works, they sound brilliant, and it showed me, good Lord, how come it was not really made a priority for us to get some good competent people in this space a long, 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 long time ago, for things that are so important? So I think sometimes we get caught up in the weeds in certain things, and we're not looking at the things that are really significant and that matter. So those are a couple of things I wanted to, to bring up. I also brought up about a person we were looking to get terminated. They have resigned from Police Accountability Board, we're very happy for that. And we also do want to remind Council as well, a comment was made about everybody, as one of, oh, I think it was Hutchinson says, everybody drives on the shore. No, they don't. There's a whole lot of people that don't have vehicles or access to vehicles that need public transportation, and that is still not a priority here in this county that we really need to fix and change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments?
I got a couple things today. Gentlemen from the airport, I live where one of them planes might drop, right near the airport. So, no, sit down, you can sit down. This is our council time to talk, and I'm very concerned about your comments today, and I think the council's going to try to get some answers very quickly.
Can I say one thing? My wife's oldest daughter died in an aircraft crash at the airport.
Sorry to hear that.
So this is something that matters.
All right, well.
And it's kind of ironic now that I'm the airline pilot.
Yeah, we'll get to the bottom of it. I can look up most any day and see a private plane flying around the house. I can look up most any day and see a private plane flying around the house, you know, people. County executive has posted a press release. I'll read the headline. "Wacomiko County Executive Proposes a $3 Million Property Tax Reduction in FY '26 Budget Despite State Funding Challenges." Now, I'm going to explain why that happened. She knows where I stand. She knows where Jeff stands. She knows where Shane stands. I'm pretty sure she knows where the rest of the council stands. I don't think this council was going to go for busting the revenue cap, and I think the council was going to probably go for doing what the charter says about reducing it. So she'll use this to her advantage. That's fine, and we'll have to look at it, and hopefully no other department suffer because of it. And we'll come to a balanced budget that everybody can agree on, not that I always vote for the budget. Josh voted against it last year for one reason. I voted against it for another reason. Isn't that right? Both of you, yeah. So anyway, but anyway, that's how politics works. People do use things to make theirself look good. I want to address something in the city. I serve on planning and zoning, which is city and county, so I do have some interaction with city events, and we're getting ready to change that, which is fine, but I want to give a shout out to Randy Taylor, the mayor of Salisbury. He's changing the traffic pattern on Carroll Street. That had to be the most idiotic thing that was ever done, and I'm glad to see he's doing it, and when he gets that done, I'm going to see if he can't move down to by the college and take some of that stuff out down there, and then maybe to Isabella Street. I'll send those suggestions to him, but I just want to, I hope Randy's watching, or maybe he'll hear this. I just want to tell him thank you. I've heard, as long as I've been on this council, thousands of complaints over the years about things, you know, you know, grass, neighbors' grass growing, neighbors got junk in the yard, you know, potholes. I've never had any more complaints, and I'm not even in the city, about Carroll Street and the issues at the college. I think I've had more complaints about those issues than anything that I've ever had since I've been on this council. So a shout out to Randy Taylor for what he's doing. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for attending. I do, and Mr. Line Decker, if you send a county council an email, we do have our email address on there. It'd be nice to summarize all that. That way, we have a vehicle to help address it. And then I did want to say also, you know, the issue, the bigger issue with the tariff situations, we've got multiple businesses here in the county that are in manufacturing that are likely going to be out of business in six months or less if that continues, and those businesses will not open. And so on a serious note, we really do need to figure out as a community how we help, if nothing happens, if that doesn't change, if forces outside all of our control continue to push things in a way that are, that force those situations to happen, I think we, as a community, need to be very clear about and figure out how we are going to help because we're not on a path that's a sustainable one, it's a good one, and in fact, we do have very real situation with that. So I'll leave it at that, but that is a very real situation that hundreds of people in Wacomiko County will lose their jobs if that's not changed in the very near future. And then on a happy note, I'm just going to say, happy, hope everyone has a good Easter this weekend, happy tax day today, and, just kidding, on holiday, right? Hope everyone had a good Passover, and I do appreciate, once again, everyone for coming here, and thank you again for all, everyone for expressing your comments and your thoughtfulness. It certainly, we feel it in the same kind of way, and we are looking for answers, too. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for coming out as well. As I said, stated before, this council has the ability to control the financial well-being of the county, and we need to make sure we do that this year. We need to look over this budget. I was a little concerned and didn't understand why all of a sudden now the Board of Ed doesn't need any upfront funds, so we'll have to look into that. That's about all I've got.
So the good news is, the session in Annapolis is over. The bad news is, the session in Annapolis is over, and we have to deal with the aftermath. Again, I want to give a shout out to our delegation who continues to advocate for our way of life down here, and they didn't win everything, but kudos for getting in there and being our voice. We're seeing funding challenges from the federal and state level that are going to impact us, obviously, and going back to what somebody said on the podium, it's not a bad thing to have money in the bank, especially now with the uncertainty of what's going on. There was a pretty large litter pickup effort on this past Sunday down by the Fruitland Walmart in that area down there. 1,280 pounds was picked up.
Wow.
My understa, I wasn't there, I was double booked that day, so I couldn't be on that one, but my understanding is they had well over 30 volunteers show up from Salisbury University, sororities, fraternities, more than 30?
More than that.
Okay. But kudos to everybody that showed up for that. Believe it or not, spring is theoretically here, so all the sports teams are kicking off. Fruitland Little League unfortunately had to cancel their parade and opening ceremony on Saturday, but I'm told they're going to reschedule. Well, Salisbury Little League had a pretty big event on Saturday. It's great to see all the kids out playing sports and green grass and all that good stuff. For those that don't know, the sheriff's office is open now. They love giving tours, so if you haven't been on a tour out there, stop in and ask to be shown around. It's better if you come through the front door. If you come through the back door, you will not get a tour of the entire building. You'll be shown to a very small room. And it is, again, we gave a proclamation out, but it is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, the 13th through the 19th. A shout out to all of our dispatchers and folks in emergency services. They are staffed 24/7, 365, day, night, snow, rain. You know, they keep going when all of us are sleeping at night, so shout out for the work that they do, and we appreciate their service, and that is all I got.
Thank you. Andy?
I want to say, I like to see people when they attend these meetings, whether they're getting a proclamation or just being here, and also I appreciate comments because this is a time we have freedom of speech, whether we agree with what you say or don't agree with what you say. You have the right to come up here and express your concerns because this is a troubling country now, and I think we should not be afraid to say what we think, and then when you call maybe one of your council representatives, but it gives you an opportunity so all of us could hear what your concerns are, whether they agree or not, and I encourage people to come to the meetings. It's our right to look at it on PAC 14, but come and face us so we can see your faces and express your concerns. Again, I, they brought up the accountability board, Ms. Brooks did. I'm concerned that we haven't heard from them. I think there are cases that we formed this board, we should get a report. I think it's either yearly, I think it needs to be done more than yearly or quarterly, whatever it is. I haven't seen a report, and I know over a year or more. I think it's time that we find, I have to give this one bad note. My brother and his wife cleaned for title health, and they were stopped by the police. My brother was drug out the car, and guns were to his head. His wife has a condition, and they said they were looking for a white man in a white car. My brother does not look white. He did not have a white car. He had a tan Suburban. He never received an apology from the law enforcement. So we got to be cautious of things that's happening to Lord of Biden, since he's a pastor also. These things are still happening in our community, and I don't know how to rectify it, but I think an apology when things happen like that, because you have bad apples in anything, you should be accountable for what your employees do. Now, the good news is, when the delegation was here, Sharice Sample Hughes was mentioning the funding we got for Indian Village Playground. So we're going to see a fruitation of that, being more family-oriented, hopefully in the next year or so, that we're going to be gradually getting that done. So it didn't happen overnight, but I'm happy to hear that. And that's it.
Thank you, Shannon. Under President's comments, I would like to also repeat, really appreciate having everybody out here today. A lot of people came, and we like to see that, and a lot of good comments that were made today. Glad to see we have a budget that is not attempting to bust the revenue cap. No need to bust the revenue cap, never is. When you say you want to bust the revenue cap for education, that only means that you are refusing to cut in other areas, and that's why we have a revenue cap in place so that you learn to spend appropriately and within your means. So I don't think it makes any sense ever to arbitrarily do that. I know that a couple of months ago, we were certainly on that fast track to bust a revenue cap. I'm glad to see that's changed because what this council had to do last year to restore the revenue cap and put the money back in the taxpayer's pocket, it was a lot of work, and it took so much time, but we did get it done. We restored it, and I'm glad we did. So that being said, we will be holding budget hearings periodically throughout the next couple of months. We don't hold all of our budget hearings in these county council meetings, so, you know, everybody is very interested and has been following what this council does on a regular basis. Keep in mind that we will be issuing, will we be putting it in the newspapers when we have-
We do not normally, we do not normally post it on the, or put it in the newspaper, but it is posted on the website.
So again, as Mrs. Hurley said, we will be posting on the website when we have special budget hearings for individual departments, whether it's the airport, whether it's roads or whatever it might be, so try to pay attention to that, and we'll know pretty much in advance when we're planning this ahead of time, so we could supply you with a list also.
Yeah, so I will say, the public hearing on the budget, though, will be on the website as well as in the newspaper, and that's an opportunity for the public to come out and speak on the budget.
You'll have that opportunity, but again, you may want to listen to the public work sessions as well, you know, with the individual departments, so keep that in mind, and I think if we have anybody's emails and stuff, I don't mind, I think we should email them. As soon as we know what our work sessions are going to be, we'll get a letter out to everybody so you have a record of it. So that being said, thank you all for being here. Entertaining a motion to adjourn so we can go into, from legislative sessions, so we can go into open work sessions?
Move.
Second? All is a favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Take 20.
Legislative sessions adjourned.